Dale Waltman into retirement this past week after over thirty years of service to our nation and our Commonwealth, so we wish him well. One of the greatest pleasures I think he had at the end of his career was coming and assuming the community outreach God, so just in keeping with our commitment of being great partners with our neighbors, we'll continue on with back to the Gap. I think our neighbors will be happy that for loud training, we only have two days scheduled as fun. That is on the thirteenth and the fourteenth, we'll be doing demolitions training and in fact, the demolitions they'll be using are light demolitions, so it will not be very noticeable to our neighbors. With that said, we will continue on with our busy flight schedule from our Army Aviation Training Site, which is nested at the Gap, so there will be helicopters flying every day and we fly friendly, so we avoid populated areas. Population of troops this week, we've got over two thousand troops on the Fort Indian Town Gap. We're starting to get into the lull of our training towards the end of the federal fiscal year, which ends thirty September, but next week we'll pop back up to about four thousand and that's probably the troop population density will continue on through August and most likely into September. With that said, we still have had over a hundred and twenty-one thousand troops that are trained on the Fort Indian Town Gap, that's going to exceed last year and that will continue as the most heavily used National Guard installation United States, which is pretty impressive. Community notes, the pool, which has had a banner year, I think mainly because it has been hot. That is going to be closing on the twenty-first of August when most of the kids go back to school. The Route 433 bridge construction has finally gotten underway. They've installed, there's two bridges that are being replaced by PennDOT. They have one lane open with a temporary traffic signal, so we don't anticipate really any problems with that. Lastly, the final phase of our gate closures, which is in effect channelizing the access onto Fort Indian Town Gap to approximately three ways where we have traffic coming in and out will occur on the fifteenth of August. Probably like we stated before, it will not be noticeable except to those who work on the Fort Indian Town Gap, so the major roads, Fisher and Clement Avenue are going to continue to be wide open for the foreseeable future. So pending any of your questions, that's all we have from the Gap.
I just think it's great that you keep reminding at least the local folks here the vital nature of for national security purposes of the Gap to our country, so it's a, that's a great thing to pound into our, our heads that, you know, what's called the scope of things that are going on out there, so thank you.
Thank you, sir. And I do have, as we say in the military, one alibi for, I know this goes down to the public through social media. We are very active in social media at Fort Indian Town Gap. If you utilize Facebook, go to the Fort Indian Town Gap page, that has great updates on what is going on at the Gap, timely articles about our services that are open to the public, and we invite you to like our page and continue to get information on it. Thank you, Walt.
Thank you very much. A little bit later in the meeting, I'll have the request action to, to add Mr. Wessling to the LPG, so Level Defense Group in place of Colonel Waltman. We'll do that very good. And we'll approve, or ask for approval of the minutes over the last meeting. Is that right? All seconded. Any comment or question, any additions or additions? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Close same sign, so move. Sally?
Okay. We have receipts on August the second and August the third of one million four hundred forty-four thousand, two hundred forty-four dollars and eighty-five cents. That brought us to a total cash of two million, one hundred ninety-four thousand, one hundred ninety-seven dollars and one cent. We had expenditures this week of one million, eight hundred seventeen thousand, fifty-seven dollars and eighty-four cents. The undistributed tax claim is forty-two thousand, four hundred twenty-three dollars and thirty-seven cents. That leaves us a balance of three hundred thirty-four thousand, seven hundred fifteen dollars and eighty-six.
Thank you.
I make a motion to approve the treasurer's report as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comment or question, hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
So moved. Thank you. I'd also like to comment on the refinishing of this massive desk. I think it was, I think the NBRs always eight thousand bucks to have it done. Just kidding. Our folks internally did it, did a great job, yeah, bringing back the lost spirit. Very nice. That's okay, I filled in a little bit.
Enter again.
All right. May proceed.
Shall we just start your hearing process? Dan Shank of Human Resources Assistant. Under Personnel Transactions, Terminations and Resignations, Brian Bowman, Telecommunicator, resignation effective August eleventh. Madonna Flinch, caseworker two, resignation effective August fifth. Brian Core, full-time correctional officer, resignation effective July twenty-fifth. Nicole Sheridan, payroll clerk, resignation effective August twelfth. Alyssa Patton, full-time LPM, resignation effective July thirty-first.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, that we accept those resignations and terminations, excuse me, just resignations. All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign, so moved.
Under Ethel Lyon, leave of absence, Angelica Farisi from Children and Youth, returning from a six-week leave of absence, are to be effective a six-week leave of absence on August tenth. Sharon Cisco, Area Agency of Aging, sixty-day unpaid leave of absence extension from August first to August thirty-first, two thousand sixteen. Tanya Kip from Assessment, six months of intermittent net from the light effective June thirtieth through December thirty-first, two thousand sixteen.
Make a motion to approve the leaves of absence as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign, so moved.
Changes of status, transfers and promotions. Dominic Ragato, promotion from a caseworker one to a caseworker two in Children and Youth at the rate of one thousand two hundred and thirty dollars and sixty-two cents by weekly effective August fifteenth. And Heidi Lamos, formation from caseworker two to child abuse investigator in Children and Youth at the rate of one thousand three hundred and forty-nine dollars and eleven cents by weekly effective August fifteenth.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to accept those changes. Any questions? If not all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close same sign, so moved.
Under Other Transactions, Domestic Gulations would like to hire Lewis Eisenberg as an Assistant Director/Fiscal at the rate of one thousand five hundred and sixty-six dollars and four cents by weekly effective August fifteenth. The Donutary would like to hire Enver Estrela as a General Clerk C at the rate of eight hundred and thirteen dollars and eighty-one cents by weekly effective August eighth. Domestic Gulations would like to hire Shiera Santa, Santana Perez as an Imaging Clerk/Interpreter at the rate of eight hundred and sixteen dollars and eighty-two cents by weekly and the interpreter paid fifty-seven dollars and sixty-nine cents by weekly effective August fifteenth. And Renova would like to hire Arne Aderle as a full-time developmental assistant on the second shift at the rate of eleven dollars and fifty-six cents per hour effective August fifteenth.
Make a motion to approve the hirings as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions? If not all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign, so moved.
Moving on to Salary Board. A motion to approve all the transactions previously read plus the following inter, incremental increases for the following full-time correctional officers. Scott Green at the rate of fourteen dollars and eighteen cents per hour effective August fourteenth. Alexander Getch at the rate of thirteen dollars and eighty-two cents by weekly effective August fourteenth. And Tyler Wolfert at the rate of thirteen dollars and eighty-two cents by weekly effective August fourteenth. And the following EMA telecommunicators incremental increases, Warren Evans and Tyler Brumaker at the rate of sixteen dollars and twenty-four cents per hour, both effective August twenty-eighth, two thousand sixteen.
Tyler Wolfert. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments to the Salary Board? Not all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign, so moved.
Mandated conference seminar. Carl Wunsford from EMA would like to attend the following three conferences. Pima Headquarters, Orientation in Harrisburg, November fifteenth, with mileage meals and parking reimbursement mandated by Pima. The ICS three hundred in New Cumberland, September seventh, eighth and ninth, mileage meals and parking reimbursement mandated by FEMA and DHS. Then the ICS four hundred, Advanced ICS Work Command and General Staff and License during November tenth and eleventh, mileage meals and parking reimbursement, sixteen credits mandated by FEMA and DHS. Sally Barry and Audrey Raquel from probation services would like to attend the two thousand sixteen Annual Chief Conference, Instate College, September nineteenth, through the twenty-first, three hundred and fifty-dollar total registration fee with lodging and maintenance reimbursement, ten-plus credits mandated by the PDPP. Heather Kaufman, Danielle Gray, Brianna Schwartz, Amy O'Conyers, Rhonda Schopf and Abby Casper from NHIDDI would like to attend the executive functions skills foundation for learning and adoption in Harrisburg, September twentieth, mileage reimbursement by credits mandated by Hawkedale. Jocelyn Grassley from NHIDDI would like to attend the mandate refresher training at Warner's Health State, September nineteenth and twentieth, mileage and meals reimbursement mandated by the Warner's Health State Hospital. Suzanne Miller from probation services would like to attend the assertiveness skills for managers and supervisors in Harrisburg, September ninth, seventy-nine dollars and sixty cent total registration fee, meals and parking reimbursement, six credits mandated by PDPP. Tatia Malles from DA's Office would like to attend the instruction to trial advocacy in State College, September twentieth through the twenty-second, three hundred and twenty-five dollars for registration fee, lodging, meals, parking reimbursement, fifteen credits mandated by the PA CLA. Chairman Hensley is replacing Margaret McDonaldough, who was previously approved to attend from the DA's Office, the search and seizure training in Harrisburg, August fifteenth, fifty dollars total registration fee, meal and parking reimbursement, six, or three credits mandated by the PA CLA Board. Endeavor Spitler from Area Agency of Aging would like to attend a systematic approach to quality care for the elderly in Vanville, October twentieth, eighty-five dollars total registration fee, mileage meals and parking reimbursement, seven credits mandated, mandatory to report for our in license remit. And Edmund Smith from Drug and Alcohol would like to attend the two thousand sixteen PAC DPA A P's Management Conference in State College, September twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth, one hundred and twenty-five dollars total registration fee, lodging, mileage meals reimbursement mandated by the DPA.
Motion. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept mandated conferences. Any question or comment on any of those? If not, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close same sign, so moved.
When a requested conference seminar, Dawn Wolf and Patty Tengen from NHIDDI would like to attend the Everyday Lives Conference in Hershey, September fourteenth, two hundred fifty dollar total registration fee with mileage reimbursement.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second to accept that request. Any questions? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign, so moved.
Janine Mouser, Lori Bradley, Casey Felty, Emily Riedel, Arne Mulliman, Amy Leitner, Heather Rolloman and Chris Pelker from NHIDDI would like to attend Building Social Capital for Transitional Repairs in Harrisburg, August ninth, with mileage reimbursement.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded, that we support that request. Any questions? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close same sign, so moved.
Nicole Slade from NHIDDI would like to attend the two thousand sixteen Fourth Annual Mental Health Summit in Lebanon, September ninth, with mileage reimbursement.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to accept that request of seminar. Any questions? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign, so moved.
Chris Heagle and Amy Casper from NHIDDI would like to attend the Everyday Lives Conference in Hershey on September fifteenth, with a two hundred and fifty dollar total registration fee and mileage reimbursement.
Make a motion to approve the requested conference.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, that we approve that request. Any questions? If not, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign, so moved. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. Dan Seaman from Lebanon County Assessment Office. I'm here with three disabled veterans and exemption requests, one for Jeffrey Alzerman at Twenty-two Mill Avenue, New Jonestown, one for Dixie Del Gasper at thirteen hundred East Gertrude Avenue, Myersstown. Actually, I'm sure that's right. And Ellis Barnett at Five Mill Avenue, Baltimore.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and accepted, that we, or seconded, that we accept the request of our successor for those exemptions. Any questions? Not all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign, so moved.
Say it was Gertrude. Say it was Gertrude. This is all the way around the road.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
Morning, gentlemen. John, if you'd like to make introductions, then you can proceed with your report.
Certainly will. Good morning, Commissioner. My name is John Wilson, Director of Emergency Management. I have along with me today, Mr. Gary Rurney, he's our hazard materials chief. Welcome. Happy to have you.
Thank you. Nice to have you.
Do you want to, just before he proceeds, give a minute about your life?
My life? Wow. Well, I'm a lifelong resident of Lebanon County. My family's very deeply rooted in this county as far as public service and everything that go along with that, both social-wise and emergency services, first responder-wise. I've been a firefighter in the county for twenty-two years now, making myself sound old. I've been EMS for twelve years, last ten was with First Aid and State Patrol. I was a lieutenant for the last four or five years as one of the first EMTs to be promoted to lieutenant. I had a wide array of incidents to go along with my twenty-two years total. So I'm just excited to bring my experience and leadership experience to the county to, for the team.
Very good. Thank you, John.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioner. The reason we're here today is a hazardous material report is required by FEMA, so that allows us to fly for their hazardous materials for answering. I'm asking for your approvals of how this submitted to FEMA so we can continue to fly for transit. As you read through it, there's here any collections of the tier-two facilities and deposits of the incident counts. So I'm asking for approval.
entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the hazardous material report.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, that we accept that request. Any questions? John?
Yes. Couple things curious about, hopefully we have time to talk about this. The incident with the sulfuric acid the other week and just the status of the hazardous materials in the state.
Okay, well, what's your question?
You know, I mean, that's, it's not every day you get called out for something that big.
Oh, my first day.
Yeah.
Well, in my years of training new firefighters and EMTs, you always went on the motto that what you saw on TV doesn't happen in real life. Well, anybody can tell you that I've worked with whatever happens on TV does in fact happen to me, so that was just fair. Well, pretty much what happened with that was exactly what the state police reported that driver said happened. He broke, he broke really hard suddenly for an accident that was up ahead and something punctured two totes that was carrying sulfuric acid, which caused it to spill out. When we arrived on scene, he was, the driver was trying to contain it himself. We quickly pulled him back because of the, we weren't sure quite what equipment that we were gonna, or the personal protective equipment that we're gonna have to use to be able to approach the incident and contain the spill and stop the spill. We were able to do that, we were able to get the information from him. We immediately dispatched Lancaster's hazmat team because we're, we have a signed mutual aid agreement with them. They assist us, we assist them, which we did a couple months ago with the Tyson Foods. Quickly, when all was said and done, as far as the containment of the spill and the stop of the spill leakage, didn't really take too long. Our crews really worked well together with Lancaster. They were really eager to get in there and, you know, show what they can do, so to speak. And then we turned everything over to their cleaning company, their cleanup company. Nothing was affected. We had DEP out there, nothing as far as their level concerned were, was affected, nothing in any waterways or, and any livestock or anything like that wasn't affected and there was no chance of them being harmed with, after we did the initial containment. As, your next question?
May I just add, did I misunderstand correctly that FEMA was also there and everybody worked well together?
FEMA was contacted, yes. Were they on?
FEMA was contacted, it was DP.
DP was.
Yes. Yes. So, but everybody, all, all aspects of state government, county government and volunteer firefighters, O'Noe, Wickdale, when Indian Town Gap was out there to assist, First Aid and State Patrol, everybody worked well in all aspects of it. I was very, very pleased for being my first incident on my first day, how, how well everybody worked together and just the excitement, everybody had to work together to get things done, so.
The other question was just the status of the county's hazmat certification with the state.
This, we, we had, we had our, our inspection, and we had our drill this past Saturday, which we passed, so everything, there's a few corrective actions paperwork-wise, but other than that, we're, we're gonna be resurfaced and we're gonna be here for another four years and if I have anything to do with it, longer than that.
And we do extend thanks to Gene and, you know, for his getting the extension of time and, and also working with us so well as a partner in this thing to, to get us through it, so that was done on Monday, I think.
But goodbye to the incident. If you said it, it wasn't a very, very large leak and, and you seem to minimize what occurred out there, however, two lanes of Interstate eighty-one were shut down for a while. I don't know why, why was that?
What happened was it was five hundred pounds total that was leaking or affected, so there was still about a hundred pounds in each container, so three hundred pounds spilled out. What we faced was a storm coming and with sulfuric acid, it reacts with water. Now, obviously, you put enough water on something, it's gonna dilute it out, but with the threat of the type of storm we had coming, and you could see it down the interstate, we had to work quickly, but we also had to take care of our crews there. Why shut down both, both sides of eighty-one, both southbound and northbound, were because with the water and the rain that already happened there and the ground being wet, it created a smoke and it was going on to the other, other lanes of travel. And just cars traveling in the other lane, driving into that smoke, and I'm not saying that it was hazardous to breathe or anything, because at that point, we didn't have any of our air monitoring equipment, we weren't able to deploy our air monitoring equipment, that happened just like that. So just to be safe as precautionary measures for the transits and the citizens of the county, I thought it was a good idea that we probably stop traffic, both for responder safety and safety of, like I said, the transits and citizens of the county. As far as what was on the street or on the road, that stuff was all tested with pH paper and, you know, initially, I can't speak for the cars driving through, but that's how we set up our hot zone, warm zone, cold zone, was by testing that pH paper and, and what was on, on the ground. So if it was, if it was more hazardous than, than, you know, that it was hazardous enough where we couldn't operate, we would have been farther back, but we had a pretty good handle on, on the situation and what was spilled and continuing to spill.
I, I do have one other question and, I don't know if John, maybe you wanna address There are a number of counties that do not have hazmat teams and they contract services up to a provider and some say that that, in some cases, that's cheaper than having your own hazmat team. What are the advantages of having an in-county hazardous materials response team as opposed to contracting services?
A faster response for one thing. They communicate the problem faster than having a response team come.
It's hard.
Contracted, or somewhere far away, even though all, the law allows them two hours to respond. If they don't respond until two hours, you still have two hours to arrive on the scene, so potentially it's going to take four hours for anybody to do anything, but whereas the county team, you know, since we're dispatching, it takes twenty minutes and the team responds to the call.
We gotta reflect your response to this sulfuric acid incident on the case.
Sure. We were quickly responding to that incident, got the information from the fire departments, this is what they seen there, established the zones and started doing cleanup much quicker than contracted team. Because we have, we had, we have to wait for the cleanup teams to come and we already had the incident under control prior to the arrival of the cleanup team, how long it took.
It was probably a good hour and a half that we had to contain and stop for cleanup control, the contracted cleanup.
Our team does the suppression and the holding of the incident cleanup.
Jack had a question behind you.
Yes, as a retired hazmat handler myself, I can answer part of Normie's question. Do you realize how much hazardous material travels through Lebanon County? I can read the, the placards that are on the vehicles, whether it's trains, trucks, whatever. We have a inordinate amount of hazardous materials on our roadways and if we're gonna be penny wise and pound foolish and try to save money by not having a local crew, we're gonna pay for it one way or the other. So I say thank you very much for having the crew and having them be as efficient as they are.
I thank you for your support, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, because of the fact that the Swetara Creek flows underneath Route eighty-one and a lot of the incidents do happen on Route eighty-one and our drinking water incidents do happen on Route 81 and our drinking water is oftentimes drawn from the Swetara Creek, I think it's also extremely important to have that fast response of containment so that our water supply does not become contaminated. And below us is American Water Company, so they're protecting tens of thousands of people and when it comes to drinking water supply.
And we don't just have hazardous materials tech, technicians. We have also three specialists to get their hazardous materials technician certification and then they go on further for a specialist. And there's various, various topics you can become a specialist in. And I'm proud to say that the specialties that they've chosen are ones that directly affect Lebanon County, so.
Thank you. Anything else for our guests here? Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
One more thing. One more item, not move on to the, your approval for the, to accept the funds for the reanimological response fund, which is a TMI funding that we received earlier. That grants a total of $15,018 and that invested in the calibration of the reanimological interpretation and also update emergency systems in the emergency operations center.
So moved.
Seconded. It's been moved and seconded to approve that request. Any questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same signs. So moved. Good luck with your career with us.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Oh, I think so. Mr. Weisner.
The heat genuines. Sounds better. We did it. I thought that was my signal.
All right. Several things to go over here. First, I'd like to get formal action on the resolution for the burn ban. We took action last week to implement it through an emergency measure by issuing the resolution. I just want to have a formal motion on that to ratify it and then pardon us. I made that motion.
Seconded.
Seconded that we had the resolution for the burn ban last week. Any questions?
Could you please qualify the expiration date so that the public is aware?
Be thirty days from July 27th.
If we are under a drought watch from the states.
Yeah, August 26th. And any, excuse me, if we do get an indication from the fire companies, is there a sooner date that we would announce or can we just run it out to thirty days?
At this point, you know, it will expire on its own. Did speak with John just briefly the other day since there was some rain immediately following this and there were showers here and there. I guess Saturday was the biggest event, but, you know, John can, if he wants to speak for himself, but essentially, our conversation was that, you know, while that was a big event, again, as the forester indicated, those do run off because the ground is dry or the very next day or next couple of days, he'll just evaporate what was gained. So I think at this point, John, your recommendation, just let it stand for now. However, if we do get some significant rain, we'll go out and repol those fire companies and see how they feel about it. You can certainly rescind it at any time.
I think we probably have 25 that supported out of 28 or so that we got responses from.
The majority of the fire departments supported the burn ban. There was only a few that did, like three, four or so. There was only a few that did support it.
Very good. Yes, Corey?
Two questions. If you could define what you mean by significant, because Saturday's rain was significant. So I'm assuming especially in the light of the drought watch declaration by the state, that wasn't significant enough?
Yeah, I'll just, I guess, sort of repeat what I hear from DEP and weather, you know, meteorologists and so on, but a lasting soaking rain, I think, is what's really needed here.
To recharge your groundwater.
Yeah, something that can just, you know, slowly soak in and get to the water table and not just a couple of hours with it downpouring.
Well, that would certainly alleviate the drought conditions, but are you going to maintain the burn ban throughout the drought watch?
You're asking if it would be extended.
Well, it could be extended.
Yeah, we'd have to go through John, I guess.
We would recall, I would.
We would recall and reach out again to the district forester at Persona and also get weather forecasting and so forth, like we have done before.
Have you received any telephone calls, any pressure to, from anybody? Because I've seen some things on social.
We have a couple of interpretation questions. What, you know, to what extent and can we use different devices and this type? John has fielded all those to their.
Yeah, we had a few, not many. I had a gentleman call yesterday. They had removed trees on our property. He was concerned about being able to burn the tops and things like that and was looking for a way, but which we did not plan. And he was okay with that. He understands and he said he was just curious as to what we thought we were gonna lift it. And I told him that there was nothing in the foreseeable future. Maybe next week, we'll look at it again. We'll review it. We'll review it weekly, of course, as we get rainfall and so forth. Now, the forecast that I have for goes through the 17th of August. No significant rainfall in this forecast from the weather service. There's several days of sunny conditions with scattered thunder showers throughout the area and that doesn't necessarily mean Lebanon County's gonna get the thunder showers either. So it doesn't look like any type of significant rainfall for at least another 10 days anyway. That's as far as I can get forecasting. They don't go much further out than that. They're all like predictions and things like that. These are short-term forecasts and they can make them all.
John?
Have you given any exemptions?
I don't think so.
Has anybody been sanctioned? This maybe happened just last night. I saw that Jackson Township, there was.
I did see there was a controlled burn out there. I don't know what the action was. They sent the fire department out to put it out.
Right.
I don't know if the person was aware there was a burn ban or not. Generally, what happens, the police department will go out and they'll make them aware of the situation and the burn ban, but generally, they don't cite them, you know, firstly. You know, if they go back to a repeat offense, I'm sure.
But that would be, it would be the police department's responsibility.
It's all the police department, local police departments or the Pennsylvania State Police enforcement.
Yeah, that's spelled out in the county code. Enables the, yeah, there's a hundred dollars, it's a summary offense, hundred dollars first offense, 200, 300. And I guess we wouldn't really even know if someone was signing that.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. By the way, we didn't vote. I think we had the motion.
Okay.
Yes, you did have a motion. So, but any further questions or comments? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same signs. So moved.
Okay. Next, as I mentioned before, I would seek your approval to appoint David Weisner, Deputy Base Operations Manager at the Gap to the Local Defense Group Committee for the 48th Town Gap, which is the work that the members have been doing and will be in view in a couple of weeks to present the final report and also meeting with the CAP general at the Gap to present to him as well. So there's still work to do and we do anticipate that being an ongoing committee in the event that at some point the Gap would be targeted. So as we go along in spade, in the place of Colonel Walton, who did a great job for us on that committee, recommend that you appoint Mr. Weisner.
Seconded. It's been moved and seconded that we appoint David Weisner for the next 30 years. Just kidding. Any questions or comments to that motion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same signs. So moved. Thank you, David.
Thanks, sir. Man. All right, I have several allocations for liquid fuels, fixed allocations for municipalities. First being for North Lebanon Township. They intend to do a paving project on J Street at a cost of $329,326 and their fixed allocation would be $11,429. In Mount Breton Borough, they are intending to destitute general maintenance, cost of $1,000. Their allocation would be $196. In South Lebanon Township, they intend to use their aid for purchase of salt for ice control, cost of $9,463, which is also their allocation.
Make a motion to approve the liquid fuels allocation.
Does that like I?
Don't take a deep breath like that.
We're a little anxious today.
I moved to adjourn.
Give them a short meeting and they try to make it shorter.
Go for the record.
All right, Jackson Township next, to purchase salt also and the total cost of their salt purchase would be $50,000. They'd like to use their fixed allocation of $8,163 toward that. And last, Richland Borough, also using for salt purchase, cost of $3,300 and their allocation would be $1,005.
Now I make a motion to approve the liquid fuels allocation.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve that liquid fuel distribution. Any questions? All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same signs. So moved.
Lastly, I have some more medical assistance transportation program contracts on behalf of the Community Action Partnership. First being for contract between Lebanon Transit and the MATP for July 1st through June 30th and the others being for Central Medical Ambulance Service, Phil Haven Neighborhood Healthcare Services, both also being added to the list for medical assistance transportation program.
So moved.
Seconded. It's been moved and seconded that we adopt those two requests by the CAP program. Any questions?
Just one, was it two or was it?
It was Lebanon Transit, Central Medical and Phil Haven.
So they were great.
All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same signs. So moved.
You want me to do it from here?
No.
You want me to?
Yes. Don't stay mahogany up there with your fingerprints or anything, it's all. Okay, so giving us an update on the class action.
Yep. And just an update on the class action that we filed the other week. Our motion was filed on the 25th. I received word from Kessler Topaz that they investigated anybody else that had filed at the same time and they discovered that the Chicago Policeman's Benefit Fund had filed a motion to be laid plaintiff and they've lost about a million dollars. And they looked at the transaction because it was some question if the transactions and the loss was in the period of the class action. They've now investigated that and they see that all the loss was during that period and they believe that there's no good faith argument as to why the court in New York would take Lebanon County with our laws over Chicago. And they request at this point that we consent to withdraw our motion and just stay part of the class. At this point, we'll make such a motion that we follow their recommendation to withdraw the motion in court and just stay part of the class.
I'll second the motion. Motion was seconded. Accept the attorney's advice on that issue.
In their experience, they've noticed that courts would probably lean towards Chicago more than courts on us in this case. So they felt that it would be prudent to just continue.
So we're safer in the class action versus being thrown out?
Being thrown out.
Okay. Any questions, folks? All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, some of the, thank you.
Yeah, whatever.
Anything for the floor? Nothing? General motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Stand adjourned. Thank you very much.